Good morning again, everyone, and another beautiful day here in Manatee County. And thank you all for being here on All Things Lakewood Ranch. This is one of our first sessions. The next one will be June 8th in All Things Parish. So what we're trying to do with these meetings and these workshops is to bring everything out to you, to the public, to know what's going on within the county and going on within a your neighborhood like All Things Lakewood Ranch. So what they do this morning is like we do every morning at every meeting is we like to, we honor God and we pledge to our great nation. So if we could do, if you could all please, right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Commissioner Bearden to say the invocation and Commissioner Turner to say the pledge.
Father, thank you, Lord, for a beautiful day in Manatee County. It's just amazing to be able to have the opportunity to live here. So, Lord, we just want to give you honor and glory this morning in this meeting. We ask for wisdom and just guidance and direction, Lord, as you guide our day, Father. And so we just give you all the honor and glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, gentlemen. What the plan is for today is that we're gonna have presentations made by different directors of different departments here within the county. It's gonna be about a 90-minute presentation. Then afterwards, we will go to questions from the audience. The microphone's right there if you wanted to come forward. When you come forward, you would state your name, county residence, of course, and then you can ask the questions. The questions are to be related to the presentation today. So if we had to bring one of the directors up to answer a specific question, we can do that. If you have any school board questions, we have Colonel Richard Tatum, school board members in the audience, and he's more than happy to answer any questions in the back in the foyer there if you have any school board questions or anything relating to schools. And appreciate you being here, sir. Thank you. And we have former, former county commissioner Reggie Bellamy in the room today. So thank you for being here, sir. We appreciate it. Thank you. All right. What we're gonna do is we're gonna start this off, and I'm gonna ask Deputy County Administrator Evan Pilikowski, come, come on up and introduce our first speaker.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. I really want to thank you for the opportunity to present today and for the team to present today the various initiatives and projects that are happening in the Lakewood Ranch area. I really hope it's a very informative discussion for the public. And we're gonna start things off with Development Services. So I will invite Nicole Knapp, Director of Development Services, up to give a brief presentation on that.
Good morning, everybody. As Evan said, I'm Nicole Knapp, Director of Development Services. And is this echoing out there as much as it is back here?
Yeah.
And Development Services oversees all of the long-range planning and also our building division. So everything from basically cradle to grave for developments that you see in our community, whether that be with the residents or the development community. And this morning, I'm not here to speak about any one project out there that's being either reviewed, approved, or constructed. I'm here mostly to speak about the overall planning process, and so you have a better understanding of how things come to be. So the planning process and how ideas transition into approved projects. And so this, if you follow along with each of those little steps, I'll kind of follow through those. And how all these different departments that we have at the county play an integral role in working together to assist, again, the residents with something they want to build on their individual property, or the development community when they want to build a larger project. And I'm gonna speak to how we all work together to actually review those plans, no matter how small or large, to make sure that they're consistent with the comprehensive plan, which sets the future land use designation for every property out there, or the Land Development Code, which then gets more granular and speaks to how you'll implement the comp plan through specific regulations. Think of things like setbacks in building height and size and scale, density, things like that nature. So we start with all of our citizen inquiries. Believe it or not, we have about 4,000 inquiries a year. And again, those could be from a single resident who has a question about their property all the way up to a very large mixed-use development. And we have a staff that's dedicated to, that's what they do all day, every day, the reviewer on calls. And they take all of those inquiries, whether they be phone or email or walk-ins to the lobby, and they assist people with each of those projects. Eventually, some of those projects then become a little bit of a bigger idea. And that's what sometimes then we have what's called scoping meetings. Those are more informal. A resident or a property owner that owns a commercial development or industrial development, they sometimes have multiple ideas, and they're not just sure what fits into that, again, that land use category zoning and what other considerations should be out there that may be a little bit trickier with, say, access or environmental concerns. So we hold scoping meetings. Those are very informal. But again, all the disciplined subject matter experts, so our traffic experts and transportation, planning, environmental, they're all at these meetings to assist them with whether or not those plans will ever come to fruition. Second fold to that, the other option is a pre-application meeting. And those pre-application meetings, a site plan is required, and a specific use or plan of a few integral uses that work together is required. And we hold those meetings with anybody that wants to, again, a private property owner or a large developer. And we give actually more, more specific comments because now we have a site plan, even if it's conceptual, we have a site plan that we can give comments on. And we go, we go through all of the code requirements in those meetings. Sometimes those plans don't meet, it's very common that they don't meet every code, that's natural. And so we go through each of those codes and comp plans to consider so that they can then, if they were to ever apply formally, amend their plans to satisfy that. And that's, that brings us to the next step. So once or if an applicant does want to develop something on their property, they have to submit a formal application. And we, all of this is done online. And whether that be from site plans, rezones, subdivisions, again, something small like an accessory dwelling unit or a shed on someone's property, all of those come through an online portal. And we have over 20 division reviewers that review it for their expertise. So like I said before, environmental, traffic design, transportation, utilities, stormwater, the school district gets copies of the plans, the fire districts, and the health department if necessary. And those reviews are guided by Florida statute. Florida statute lays out our time limits and with minimums and maximums. So when an application is submitted, the staff is required to review the plans in roughly 21-ish days because by the 30th day, we have to review the, we have to submit the comments back to the applicant. We're not allowed to be late. Same on the applicant's part. The applicant then revises their plans, hopefully to the best of their ability to address all those concerns or things that don't meet the codes, and they resubmit to us. And that cycle goes again. And it is very common for that back and forth, reciprocal reviews and revisions of the plans to go about two or three rounds. That is very common. And so we also have meetings with any of the applicants to sit down with them so that if they don't understand a comment, we can work through something, especially something that's a little bit more tricky to work through. For projects that are what we call an administrative review, meaning they do not require the board's approval, they are left in the land development code at staff's authority to review and approve, and so long as they meet all the code requirements, we can administratively sign off on them and approve their final site plan. Those projects can easily take four to six months. And the reason that, you know, to the development community or to a resident, that sounds like a long time. But you can see how, because of the guidelines and the statute, and no plan ever comes to us perfect, whether they think it is or not, it easily goes back two or three rounds, and each of those rounds is roughly using up a month. So that's how that process takes so long. For projects that then require to go to the board, which means that they are above and beyond the authority that's left to the discretion of the subject matter experts on staff, those projects then easily usually take six to nine months because there is additional level of review and analysis. They require additional reports and staff, staff reports and analysis so that we show every documentation of consistency with the comprehensive plan and the code. And then there's a review by our county attorney's office as well. So that adds additional layer of time. And eventually, those projects, some, not all, go before the board. And the conception out there is that they come forward always that the staff's in favor. What the public doesn't see is how many months we've worked with the applicant to correct, and they revise, to correct, and they revise. Otherwise, we're bringing forward a recommendation for denial. And we do do that. You just don't see that very often because the development community has worked through all of our comments because they want to take forward a product that is consistent with the code and comp plan, of course. And there's where you get down to the Planning Commission level. All projects have to be for the Planning Commission. They're an advisory board of seven members. They are a recommending body to the Board of County Commissioners. We hold public hearings, and the burden is on the applicant to present their case, and then the staff presents their findings, points out any possible inconsistencies or agreements with the applicant's presentation. And ultimately, then, the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the board. Shortly thereafter, that could be two to four weeks, those items then appear before the Board of County Commissioners. And in many cases, even if the board does approve the rezone, for example, at their hearing, there's still lots of other additional work that goes on by the applicants. They then have to resubmit and go through that rigorous project again to any, approve any site plan details or any additional site plans that weren't approved by the board. So if the board does approve what's called a general development plan, and as you can imagine, that's very general in nature, it's kind of like a bubble plan, doesn't show a whole lot of detail, the applicants then have to submit detailed engineering drawings and site plans that get very down into the weeds, and then that process starts all over again. So it could be another four to six months before they actually start applying for building permits and building. So as you can see on that screen, or I don't know if you can see, but the top number shows, like I said, we bring in about 4,000 inquiries a year. And I hope I helped you understand that the misconception that everything goes to the board and everything is rubber stamped is not necessarily, is not the case because 3% of those inquiries at max ever make it to the board. So many of those ideas don't come to fruition, and a lot of ideas do get kicked back, and they don't, they're just not consistent with the code and the comp plan, and the, and the developer comes up with a different plan if they would like to pursue development on that site. So that concludes my portion of the presentation for today. I don't know who's next.
Great job. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Nicole. Next up is our Deputy Director of Public Safety, Jimmy Crutchfield. He's gonna talk about a really exciting, first-of-its-kind initiative that I hope you're as excited about as we are. Jimmy?
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. James Crutchfield, Deputy Director of Public Safety. Good morning, Lakewood Ranch. So first and foremost, I just want to kind of give a highlight of your EMS service here in Manatee County and also talk about the specific actions here in Lakewood Ranch. Manatee County EMS was established in 1972, and we were recently just accredited by the Commission of Ambulance Accreditation Services. We operate a tiered 911 response system where telecommunications, those are your 911 dispatchers, use medical triage protocols to get the right resource at the right time, every time, to individuals who call 911. Here in Manatee County, we operate 23 ambulances, and each one of those ambulances averages about 23,000 miles annually on them. We have a staggered 24 12-hour shifts, so they start and stop at different times throughout the community in different locations. Here in Lakewood Ranch, there are six ambulances that provide services to this geographic area in the community. We also have a partnership with East Manatee Fire Rescue with a ALS fire engine, which is transferring into a QRV service. One thing to boast about Lakewood Ranch is it's about 10% higher than the community-wide average or the county-wide average for community-based CPR. And before we transition to the next slide, I just wanted to highlight that there's a CIP project coming down the ways for a new EMS station out, out by the dam. So the new exciting technology that Evan was talking about earlier, you know, I'm extremely excited about this. Lakewood Ranch is home to the one and the only 911 drone program in the United States. It's a collaborative effort with three different partners, one being Tampa General, that's a leading healthcare provider right across the bridge in Hillsborough County, your local county government, and Archer is the drone operator. So what, what are we talking about here? I, I think that the easiest way to explain this is it is a drone, a very large drone. It doesn't look like something that your kids would play with in the backyard, but it delivers life-saving interventions and equipment based off of a dispatcher's protocol. Inside the drone, there's a payload that lowers down to the ground with a string, and inside it, there is AEDs, Narcan, and tourniquets. I know it sounds super futuristic, so let me walk you through how this process works so there's some little bit of reassurance. We'll start from the very beginning. Someone has a medical emergency and they call 911. The individual is then transferred to our 911 dispatcher who starts asking a series of questions. Based on those questions, the dispatcher will then deploy a, this, this drone, and then walk through the individual how to utilize the equipment should they be willing to do You know, a picture is worth a thousand words, so here's a video on how this piece of equipment All of it's completely automated. Again, the telecommunicator, the dispatcher, is the one who has selected to use this piece of equipment. The drone then goes to the residents and lowers a payload into the driveway. The telecommunicator is still talking to the person who has called 911 and walking him through how to use this equipment. So if someone's experiencing a cardiac arrest, they'll say, "An AED has just arrived in your, in your driveway. Please go outside, pick it up, turn on the AED, attach the pads." They're just walking through the 911 caller on how to use this piece of equipment. Same goes for if someone has experienced an overdose. Again, the telecommunicator is then instructing the 911 caller on how to use Narcan and when to use it. The drone itself is operating in Class G airspace, and that is essentially where we're at in Lakewood Ranch, specifically off Malachite. There's an EMS base right across the ball field, and it is not as active for commercial, commercial flights going back and forth. Phase one, the drone operator operates five days a week, Monday through Friday, and there's an average response time of 1.45 minutes to 2 minutes and 10 seconds. Again, this is the first phase of the drone program where the operator has to see the drone fly to and from the, the location it was selected by the dispatcher. The operator is not operating or flying the drone. All of that is autonomous, and it is being sent by the telecommunicator in the dispatch center. It's sunup to sundown, and then Phase Two is when the FAA provides a 91.113 Class B waiver, which will allow us to operate completely autonomously 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and it will have a 35-square-mile radius of coverage. Again, we're, we're essentially waiting on the FAA to approve the one or 9113 waiver, and it's just a proof of concept right now. That's all. Yep.
Thank you, Jimmy. So moving on to utilities, I'll invite Patrick Shea up. He's our Utilities Director, and he'll run through a number of topics. Thank you.
Well, good morning. I don't have a drone story to share, but that was, that was quite impressive. Again, as Evan said, Patrick Shea, Utilities Director, to thank the Board and Administrator Bishop for allowing me the opportunity to speak for you today. Again, Utilities Department is made up of water, wastewater, solid waste, and our reclaim water system. So give a little bit of an overview of how we're addressing kind of the current state of the utility system within the county. Really, the big question for Lakewood Ranch is growth. Proud to say, me and my family are, are new residents to Lakewood Ranch, and this is a topic that is very, very important. So on the drinking water side, we do have a long-term planning mechanism, which includes both surface water out of Lake Manatee, groundwater, a new plant. We have a single treatment plant near the dam on Lake Manatee. We also are a regional partner with the Peace River Water District as part of our long-term planning. So any, any stories or rumors about us running out of drinking water supply is not quite accurate. Utilities Department and Board of County Commissioners have been very diligent in, in doing long-term planning to make sure that the area is well-served to meet current needs and future growth. So wastewater treatment, as I mentioned, drinking water, we have a single facility. Wastewater, we have three facilities located throughout the county. One on the southwest, one on the southeast, here, here in, here near Lakewood Ranch between 64 and 44th, and one on, on the north side. Right now, our current capacity is 33.5 million gallons of wastewater, treated wastewater per day. We are in the, in the process of a capital improvement plan to expand by about one-third over the next five years to increase that capacity to 44.5 million gallons per day. So all, all three of our treatment facilities are staged and, and ready to be expanded. Here, also, near the southeast plant is the landfill, as shown on this, on this location map here. One, one big project we're working on right now is renewable natural gas project. So the breakdown of municipal solid waste creates methane gas, which currently we're using as part of our wastewater treatment system, but there is an excess, and that excess, it's a greenhouse gas, don't release that in the atmosphere without further treatment. So we're actually flaring that. So it's being wasted, a portion of it's being wasted. So we're in a guaranteed energy savings project right now with a consultant looking at converting that excess gas into natural gas, which will be treated to a pipeline quality and put into the gas system, the grid system, add a profit to the county. So the money made by selling that natural gas will be paid to the county for that asset. A little bit more about it. There's a couple of things about renewable natural gas. Because it's renewable, there's some federal tax credits, and then there's commodity-based aspect to that natural gas, meaning people that are trying to meet certain environmental goals that their organizations are subscribing to will actually reimburse the county for the renewable aspects of that gas. Lastly, the solid waste landfill. Again, as of January 2023, we had a life expectancy of a little less than 18 years left on that landfill. Through some work with, with some consulting engineers and staff at the landfill, we were able to do an assessment of that landfill and try to extend the life. So as you can imagine, the, the time it takes to permit and put into operation in landfill is, is pretty extensive. So we've, we've, this number will, will soon be upgraded up a little bit, but right now we're looking at about 35 years of additional life on the landfill just by adjusting the slope. So the, the landfill, again, which is between 64 and 44th, off Lakewood Ranch Boulevard, you know, serves the community, both solid waste and debris management. And with that, I'll turn it over to, back to Evan. So thank you very much, and we'll be around for questions.
All right. Thank you, Pat. So up next, Public Works, and we're bringing up both Clark Davis, Deputy Director of Public Works, and Chad Butzo, Director of Public Works. Gentlemen?
Good morning. Thank you. My name's Clark Davis. I'm Deputy Director of Traffic Management for Public Works. Today, we're gonna talk to you a little bit about some of our transportation projects. Within Public Works, we have a division, it's, does some of the most visible work that we do in the county. It's our project management division. They take care of projects for some of the potable wastewater and stormwater projects and all the road projects for the county. In that, is those categories alone, the county has over 450 projects. In southeast area of the county, not all necessarily, right within the Lakewood Ranch area, we've got about 80 projects. Today, we're gonna talk about some of the major projects in that area, some others that might be of interest and focused on transportation. So the big projects we're talking about today, 44th, Fort Hammer Project, Lena Road, Lorraine Road, Moccaswell Road, and Upper Manatee River Road. 44th Avenue East is underway. It's, it's, we're on, I guess, what you could call the last part of a multi-phase project. Most of the projects west of the interstate are complete or very near completion. The section of 44th that involved the realignment of Caruso Road and the bridge over Braden River is open to traffic. It looks mostly done, but they are still doing some final bits of the, the striping on the road, signs, and little things like that to finish up. The big project that's ongoing, you've seen it, if you drive in the area, they, they're building the bridge over the interstate, and that'll create the connection from Creekwood on the west side of the interstate, connect to Lena Road, and finish the connection to Lakewood Ranch Boulevard. That project, under our contract, still has about 700 days to go, so a little under two years, but we're working with contractor and looking at some options, and we hope we can shorten the project up so instead of finishing, say, early to mid 2026, that we can actually wrap up by the end of 2025.
Look for a nice announcement on that, hopefully, in the next board meeting as we finalize the documents on the, the, trying to advance that schedule as fast as earthly possible.
For Fort Hammer, the road and the bridge are in an early step. We call a project development environmental study. This is required because we have received and expect, or hope, that we get some more federal money for the project, and we need to go through this preliminary engineering step to get there. We wanted to transition into design this summer, but we're still a couple of years or more from starting construction there, but we are trying to get something going as, as quickly as funding and processes allow. For Lena Road, this is an ongoing project. It starts with the roundabout at 44th Avenue and goes north to State Road 64. This will complete a two-lane road connection of Lena Road from State Road 64 down to 44th, just providing some additional to 44th, just providing some additional circulation options for the area. It'll go well with the 44th project that should be completed, uh, before it and, and completing the connection to Lakewood Ranch Boulevard.
I got one on that. Just, uh, in the means of the way to deliver Lena Road, uh, as a lot of, everybody knows that construction costs have gone up significantly, uh, the way it fits into there, it's a priority, but maybe not the topest priority. So, uh, a lot of expense on Lena Road was the improvements actually, uh, north of, uh, north of landfill road, because as you know, that wasn't that big of a road up there. Uh, we have significant improvements we feel should happen at the same time at the intersection at 64. Uh, so the timing of implementing that job is going to be funding development, I mean, funding available or, uh, a phased, maybe making the connection and some, uh, functional improvements before we hit the big thing. We haven't quite figured that one out yet. Uh, but it is really enticing to, to improve, uh, that parallel from landfill road up to 64 and make that the, uh, inviting draw to relieve traffic.
Lorraine Road is another one of what we call our big six projects. Uh, this will be for the widening from two lanes to four lanes from just north of State Road 70 up to the, it's not shown here, but the roundabout that the state is building at Lorraine and State Road, uh, 64. It, it shows one signal here. That's a new traffic signal at 59th at the south end. The other traffic signals that are there today at Rangeland and 44th will remain after construction. In North County, and this might be important to some of you that are involved in regional travel, you may use, um, 301 or Fort Hammer to get up to Moccaswell for some of your travel. We've, we've got a big east-west project. Two pieces are under construction. We've numbered the sections for this road from east to west. So at the parish end, we have, uh, at near 301, we have segment one. That is, uh, under construction. It's maybe somewhere in the 60% range in terms of complete. Uh, working our way to the west, segment two is the middle section on the east side of the interstate and it is, uh, advertised, uh, for construction right now. So we should be taking bids and then awarding it this summer. Segment three is fairly long, far along in design, but it's going to be a little bit longer before we get to construction there. And then on the west side, uh, segment four, that will provide four lanes from the interstate to US 41 is, uh, farther along than any of them. It's, it's approaching 90% in terms of, uh, construction completion.
Along this segment, uh, if you've driven in North County, it was desperately needed to widen this, but this is a, uh, project that is preparing for the long-term. The long-term up here is Moccaswell is a six-lane, uh, roadway in the North County area. So, uh, I've always set it along that it's basically the University Parkway of North County. I mean, it will become your collector. At the early stages of segment one and four's construction, we, uh, added some interim traffic signals, uh, that were much needed because a lot of the traffic's already there right now at, uh, Allington Gillette Road, Artisan Lakes Parkway, and, uh, just most recently, uh, uh, one will be going active at Carter Road in the, this coming week.
Upper Manatee River Road is a project that's just now getting underway. I think it was on Tuesday. We've, we've executed the last agreement we needed to, to allow the contractor to start working there. I, Chad, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this is about a two-year construction project. We've got to, uh, relocate and essentially reconstruct a main water line along the road and then, um, kind of trailing behind, but overlapping a little bit, we can start widening the road as well.
Probably closer to two and a half.
Two and a half years. And then, uh, it will be introducing two new traffic signals, uh, along the road as Some other projects, there are a mix of county projects, FDOT projects and some of the ones that are being built, um, by developers in the area. A lot of these are smaller projects and traffic signals and roundabouts. Um, we do have a resurfacing project and I know some of you are interested in what's going on there. We've done some of the resurfacing work. When we drafted this slide, we thought we were going to be after the 44th Avenue project, but we're, we're actually trying to accelerate that somewhat. So what you can expect to see this summer is some, I'll call it significant patches to deal with those areas where we've come in and filled potholes a lot of time and they've gotten really rough. So they'll just take away that entire section and, and smooth that out, but then come in with a larger resurfacing project to, to get the balance of the road, um, hopefully by the end of the year, but.
So, uh, major project actually is, uh, doesn't show to be funded until the 2025 fiscal budget. So that's, uh, 10-plus million dollars, maybe 12-plus million dollars that comes in, uh, in our fiscal year 25. So that's a major job. We have, uh, initiating funds to get ready for, uh, packaging that up for a bid for that big resurfacing job. Uh, but what you're going to have in the, is currently scheduled for the month of June. Some people will, it goes together, trying to deal with all the concerns and complaints of the, uh, there's a northern area that has some, uh, uh, serious pothole issues and there's a middle area that's got some serious pothole issues. We're going to, uh, prescribe to help us out too, as we get into the rainy season, uh, what we call a scratch leveling, uh, process of where it won't be pretty, uh, but it'll be like almost a slap, paint it black in between the, in between the stripes of, uh, putting a little bit of sacrificial asphalt down and it helps us from a maintenance time, buys us the time until, uh, probably the December or January period when the major job kicks in and ultimately we'll get a, uh, brand new surface all the way on the entire
We do have, uh, some new traffic signals that are either ongoing or planned for the area. Uh, this map's zoomed in a little bit tighter and more unusual than we usually show, show the Lakewood Ranch area, but you're looking roughly from the White Eagle, uh, corridor out to E-line. And so we've got new signals at, uh, 44th and Wood Fern. That's the one, northwestern most one, and then sort of reading like a book, left to right and top to bottom. The next one is 44th at E-line. Uh, the next is Rangeland at New Haven, uh, there near the school. The next one after that is Rangeland and E-line. Uh, Clubhouse at Lakewood Ranch Boulevard is there and in flash right now. We're constructing a southbound left-turn lane at that intersection, but, uh, hopefully it'll get the signal in operation soon. And then Players Drive at Lorraine is still in design, but it's an upcoming, uh, traffic signal as well.
Those, uh, uh, the key for the top north, five of those six will be operational very soon. The top four of those, uh, are goal, goal always remains, even though it was almost an insurmountable goal to be operational for start of school. Uh, I think, uh, we're pretty comfortable by easily by Labor Day, those, uh, top four would be in place.
FDOT is continuing work on their State Road 70 project right now. They're focused on, uh, drainage, the digging stormwater ponds and preparing some of the drainage near the Bornside at State Road 70 intersection. And, um, according to their latest report, should be working on the eastbound bridge piling. So what will be the future eastbound lane? So if you see work out there near some of the, uh, creek crossings, that's why those are there. Uh, when they're finished, they will have done some work at the Lorraine and State Road 70 intersection, which will remain a signal. Uh, they'll also have a signal at post Greenbrook East at State Road 70. And then the next three intersections past that are going to be roundabout controlled intersections. There's one at E-line Road, one at Delaweb entrance and one at Bornside Boulevard. The state also has, uh, programmed and under construction, I believe, a roundabout at State Road 64 and Lorraine Road and it's 145th Street East on the north side. In agreements with developers, we have several roundabouts along State Road 64 and Bornside Boulevard. Uh, the ones, the, the three along State Road 64 at the top, that's, uh, E-line, uh, I think it's called Lighterwood Trail and Bornside Boulevard. And then two south of there, uh, on Bornside Boulevard, those are all under an agreement with Taylor Ranch. Those are, are more or less guaranteed in that agreement. The construction for those is staged, but you'll see most of those coming online in 2025 and 2026. Uh, we are in discussions with, um, Trader Manatee Ranch about a roundabout at the Lakewood National Entrance on Bornside Boulevard. That's not a certain thing yet, but it's something that we're looking at. And then we, there's either agreements or commitments, um, by the stewardship district to do a, a roundabout at the Masters where it connects to Bornside Boulevard and then Bornside Boulevard at University Parkway.
Little bit about some people love or hate on roundabouts, uh, multiple reasons why a lot of them are being considered. Uh, along Bornside, we have this opportunity of being right here at the time, uh, during this calendar year is when the effort is starting to four-lane those roads. Uh, it's never, certainly never, uh, a cheaper time to attempt to do roundabouts if you wanted to do them. Uh, if nothing else, you always have multiple needs. You have access management for neighborhoods that were built with limited access points. So most major neighborhoods have major roads that go in and out of them. And eventually at that point, either we'll almost always beg or the citizens will beg for a signal. So a roundabout does provide that safe, uh, access point to be able to make left turns. And it also provides us the ability to in, introduce some traffic calming or speed management as, if you will, because these thoroughfares, four-lane divided roadways are pretty straight and, uh, pretty effective for high-speed.
And then the, the last group of projects, the, like, developers of Lakewood Ranch are looking at widening a University Parkway, uh, from Lorraine to Bornside. Um, outside the limits to the west, that's the roundabout that's by itself there is, um, one that we're working on in agreement with, um, Lakewood Ranch right now to, uh, build a roundabout at University and the Deer Drive Legacy Intersection. Um, the next roundabout that's within the limits of the widening where the red line is, is at Covenant Way. Um, that one is also just in preliminary talks, so it's not a certain thing. The next two are for the subdivision entrances along the way between Lorraine and, uh, Bornside. Those are even less certain, but could happen. And then finally the one at Bornside, we've already talked about, that is one that, that, um, stewardship district is fairly well committed to complete. And that concludes the overview of transportation projects.
Just a little bit of clarity down here on this section of the county, uh, while Lakewood Ranch, uh, proper in Manatee County is generally built out, some of this stuff is, uh, being introduced because of Lakewood Ranch and Sarasota County. So, uh, the legacy Deer Drive area, uh, there's a lot of, uh, extra traffic and, uh, demand at that place. That's Out-of-Door Academy. So, uh, we knew we had some desires of turn lane adjustments in there. So that was a good partnership to improve the overall, uh, access there. Uh, Covenant Way, it's one of those items during the four-lane and the access to the shopping center. Uh, that's that loop road on the east edge of the, uh, shopping center. It, it just, it looks to make more sense to be able to continue to provide, uh, southbound to, uh, westbound, eastbound travel out of the shopping center. It looks like a good idea. The two in the middle are, uh, wonderful for, uh, speed management, uh, but that'll be dependent on how we, uh, can find funds and, uh, negotiate a, uh, good agreement for the county. The one at Bornside, uh, uh, Bornside's going to get pushed into Sarasota County, so it ultimately, uh, needs access management at that location.
All right. Thank you, Clark and Chad. Uh, up next, we have the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Uh, there's Elliot Falcione.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. Evan, I'm going to recommend you to host the Oscars. I think he's pretty, doing a pretty good job. What do y'all think? Yeah, we gotta liven up this crowd a little bit. Lakewood Ranch resident, uh, I've been here since, uh, you couldn't get pizza delivered to your house. Uh, so I think we'd all agree, we've seen some change. So Tourism Department, just really, really quick, uh, what tourism brings to, to citizens like us. Uh, it's given us a $48 million convention center connected to a $110 million Marriott Resort and Spa. It's given us 10 and a half million dollar enhancements to premier sports campus, uh, that's going to serve our kids, grandkids, et cetera. Uh, it gives us the Bishop Museum, the, the future art center, the Manatee Performing Arts Center, uh, including our beautiful beaches, piers, et cetera. Uh, there's nothing better than assets that benefit and enhance the quality of life for the residents that live here at no cost to the residents that live here. One more initiative, uh, that is on the screen here. I can't see it. Let's see here. Is it right there? There it is. Uh, the Gulf Islands Ferry, uh, your tourism director, uh, working with Chad Butzo and his team. We launched it January the 12th. Uh, two 49-passenger catamaran pontoon boats. Take you about 35 minutes to go from the day dock in downtown Bradenton to the city pier on Anna Maria Island, uh, and then you can venture down to the historic Bridge Street. The neat added amenity is, uh, Chad and his team working with MCAT. Uh, you can download an app, uh, that is a GPS, uh, that if you're eating lunch at Pier 22 and you're wondering if the water ferry's on time, you can actually pull up that GPS and know where both water ferries are at any given time during the service. Uh, GulfIslandFerry.com is where you access all the information, where you buy tickets. It is a cashless, uh, operation, but you can walk up and, uh, buy a ticket through the crew, but I would urge you to buy in advance. It has become pretty popular. Right now we're moving about 325, 350 passengers each day that we run. Think about it, folks, that's taken about 175 to 185 cars off the road from the mainland to the island. Uh, this board, um, talks about it and they, and they lived it by saying, we're going to work hard to enhance multimodal transportation from the mainland to the island. Uh, and this is a huge first step as well. We're running right now Wednesdays through Sundays from 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Uh, that gives you about eight departures from downtown Bradenton each day. Uh, where do we go from here, uh, from these three stops? We're going to, uh, work with Charlie Huntsaker, who's following me shortly, I believe, uh, to add Kokina Beach stop, uh, for the service. Uh, we as beachgoers who live here are likely to, um, to utilize Kokina Beach. So we're going to bring it down there, uh, hopefully sometime in early to mid 2025 and then obviously bring the convention center to Palmetto at the convention center. Imagine if you're at a convention with your family, you're going to your meetings and the family says, hey, you know what? We're going to take the jitney from the Marriott down to the pier, uh, just, uh, 50 yards away and take a day trip to the island as well. Prices are great. Uh, for example, adults 18 and over is six bucks. Round trips 10 bucks. We do offer senior and military discounts, $4. Four to 18 is $4 and then three and under is free. Uh, also on that site is a discount pass. Uh, so when you buy a ticket, you get a discount pass for attractions, restaurants, et cetera. Uh, and this service is paid by the tourist, not the residents. So it doesn't get any better than that. I, I, I urge you to try it. Uh, it is pristine. Uh, I have to admit, as your tourism director, uh, when we did a familiarization tour with the Board of County Commissioners, uh, right after the holidays, that was the first time that I was on a boat in the Manatee River. Uh, I'm a city kid from Pittsburgh. Uh, but I tell you what, it is pristine. It is a beautiful ride. So it is a water ferry and it's entertaining, not a taxi. So thank you so much. Enjoy your day. Appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you, Elliot. And up next, Natural Resources. We've got, uh, Charlie Huntsaker, Director of Natural Resources.
Where's the, where's the clicker? There. Yeah. Okay. Oh, man. Gonna pick this, gonna pick this up in just a minute. That's right. Well, thank, thank you. Um, there's our slides, right? Coming up. And of course, uh, like Elliot, I've been a Lakewood Ranch resident since the 19th century. My daughters remind me that all the time. And the 20th. Okay. Whatever. Been here a while, like you. That's right. Some of my family was. But you know, I want to go through a few things and some concepts and some thoughts, uh, because Lakewood Ranch is part of our, our county. Our county's part of the state. The state is part of, and our state is part of our nation. And a little bit about the fact that water on this planet, water in the state and water at Lakewood Ranch connects everything. And so I'm here to talk a little bit about water quality and Manatee County's water quality plans and its future. It's very exciting. Some of those things that we have to look to, of course, are how, water begins with you, begins in your yard, begins in your homeowners associations, the medians out here, and then it expands to the county. And you look to the city governments, the county government to help you leverage your actions to make sure that what you're doing is magnified and looked at with a very, very big picture. And of course, for us, that includes all the things that we do in, in drinking water, our wastewater treatments and where that water goes, all the things we do to try to control stormwater runoff and all the other things that come with it. And finally I'll talk a little bit about environmental land management and acquisition. management and acquisition. You know, this next slide, which is hard to see, but it talks about why do we know, and why do we say we're successful in leveraging funding and protecting these resources? And some of these statistics here on this slide kind of speak to that. A lot of places around this country recognize the wonderful natural settings of the environment. The federal government, USCPA, and the state of Florida have also recognized this special place by declaring it part of the national estuary system. There are 25 places like this in the United States. One in Florida, Indian River Lagoon, Charlotte Harbor, Sarasota Bay, Tampa Bay, and now a new estuary program up in Estero, up by the Destin area. These special places around this country are all facing challenges of growth and development. We're probably growing at about 10,000, 12,000 people a year here in Manatee County. So with this growth rate, what is happening? You would expect, with that population pressure, the crush on our surface receiving waters. They're called receiving waters because they receive everything that we give them. Stormwater runoff, our runoff from our lawns, blessed with rainfall, but it comes. So what about those receiving waters? Sarasota Bay seagrasses are now covering 114,000 acres. That's, Manatee County is roughly 500,000 acres. So if you can imagine one acre for every five out here as you drive around, that's one acre, that acre is out there in the water, providing services. Seagrass recovery and seagrass growth is our canary in the coal mine. We know that when seagrass is recovering and growing, our water quality is responding, and it's in excellent condition. When it's declining, it's going the other way. We had a big red tide here in 2018. We lost a lot of fish. We lost a lot of resources. And we lost a lot of seagrass. But since that time, seagrass is recovering and growing back again to return to this 1,114 acres. That is a positive sign that, what are we doing? Are we doing the right things? The answer is yes. We're also doing it, again, water quality begins with us. There's our Air Force Extension Service, through IFAS, University of Florida, the right here, you know, the master gardeners that we're familiar with maybe. They also help our commercial growers and our golf course managers to save water, individuals, and actions around your yards. This year alone, it's saved 18 million gallons. That's 18 of those tanks that you see hovering above us as we drive around in water, in water tanks. All these things are efforts and confirmations that our water quality is strong and remains so. We have a little bit more responsibility, always though, because there are hundreds of, you know, there are tens of thousands of homes, perhaps 100,000 or more, and everyone has a lawn. Everyone has an ideal that they want that lawn to be healthy and a landscape around their homes. But I'm telling you what, in the summer, when it's raining, you don't need to fertilize your lawn. And recognizing this, governments from Pasco County down to Fort Myers and Naples, along the coast of, southwest coast of Florida, said, we've got to kind of pull back the use of fertilizers during the summer period. You fertilize your lawn at 8:00 a.m. in the morning, and it rains an inch of rain at 2:00 in the afternoon. What happens? It hits the curb, it goes down the street, and lands in our receiving waters. Those fertilizers are nutrients for all the algae that we see. It increases and enhances red tide when it's here. It gives us algae blooms. It gives green water. Sure, Mother Nature and its receiving waters can take that, but they can't take a lot of it. And so we have shown that by restricting, so we say, oh, it's a fertilizer ban. No, it's a restriction during the summer to pull back on those nitrogen components of your fertilizer. And look what's happening. How do we know it's working? Well, and the next slide is some of the, some of the key restrictions, which I can go over with you after this meeting if you'd like. But I wanted to say that these procedures have been in place since 2011. So how do we know that they're working? Well, you know, it's a big task, right? We got a big county here saying, well, how do you measure that stream and that yard and that curb and that water? Well, look at the watersheds that we have. We call them watersheds. It's a place where water lands and moves to a central spot. You can get it, it can be your yard, it can be the stream, it can be the river, it can be the watershed of the Gulf of Mexico. But in this instance, we got to have a unit of measurement somehow. And we look at some of these watersheds this way. Blue says it's improving. No arrow says it's staying the same. Red, it's going the other direction. But look around Lakewood Ranch. See that blue? Improving, improving, improving. What have we grown here? Think about it. 20,000 people since 2011? Why is that possible? Because we are stewards, and we are, it's shown that our landscape applicators, the companies we hire to take care of our yards, they're following these practices in the summer, and it's working. Let me go on to say a little bit about partnerships. Again, it begins with you. But it also relies on the city of Bradenton, the city of Palmetto, the three island cities, Longbow Key. All of us are affecting the surface water water quality of Manatee County. And then let's drop it, step it back down again. What about volunteers? I mean, there's, I don't know, there's about 2,300 county employees who are working hard every day to help leverage and make improvements to keep our roads moving, our solid waste going. But in this circumstance, volunteers have been a key to keeping our environment healthy. Over, over, let me see, but this is, 3,700 volunteers that keep Manatee beautiful. Couple that with thousands of volunteers with Manatee County. That's 5, 6,000 people every year out there, three times the population of this campus every year. Done a great job for helping us move ahead and move the needle. So planning for the, so, do I have that slide? It's not there. Okay. I'm going to say, so, for planning for the future, let's talk a little bit about where we are going. Taking a look a little bit for our wastewater program. We drink 30, almost 40 million gallons a day. Most of that passes through our wastewater system, which then is returned to our lawns and our landscapes. And eventually, doesn't, lots of it evaporates, but eventually moves into our surface water. So what are we doing? Making sure that water that we deliver to our lawns and our landscapes is as low as in fertilizer content as possible. About 1917, we spent 20, about $24 million on our own volition to improve our treatment capacities and lower that fertilizer content. We're going to be spending hundreds of millions of dollars in the next 10 to 15, 20 years to keep those nitrogen levels under control. What does that mean for us? What does that mean for Sarasota Bay? Continue clean water, healthy environment, and our economy. Stormwater is the same question. Comes from the rain and the runoff. Again, I mentioned the fertilizer ordinances. I mentioned what we are doing out there to take a look at those stormwater conveyance systems, Mill Creek, Gap Creek, streams that flow through Lakewood Ranch and around us. We can get into those creeks, make improvements, and have those creeks be more efficient in taking up the nutrients that are flowing by them every time, every day, in groundwater flow, and every storm. Again, looking for and improving water quality. And then the last thing on this slide. If we don't vacuum our carpets, if we don't sweep our homes, just think about what, what happens on your floors. We're sweeping our streets. And the thought would be, okay, that's working. That's removing material from keeping it getting to the streams. What if we simply made it a goal to double that? To do it instead of once a month, twice a month? Again, seems like a simple solution, but these are the steps this Board of County Commissioners is taking to maintain and take a watch on our water quality. Then the next slide talks a little bit about testing and verification. President Reagan said, trust but verify. In our, in our industry, in our science, we say you can't, you can't manage what you don't measure. And for us, and for the staff, and the support of the administrator and this board, we, every day, every week, every month, and throughout the year, we are measuring and checking on our performance. We're measuring what we manage and double checking the fact, are we doing the right things at the right times? Next slide is not, let me get to some things I love. You know, natural resources, they're not some kind of abstract concept. They're, they're your resources. You as residents of Manatee County, and they're fundamental to our economy, healthy beaches. I think people who come here and visit and try to see the birds of this community spend hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in bed tanks and equipment and supplies, fishing industry, the economy. All of this is driven by promoting, protecting, and managing our natural resources here in Manatee County. And some of those things include working with our natural systems that help us, let Mother Nature help us. You know, oyster restoration in the Manatee River is an important component. This used to be the Oyster River of Manatee County. We harvested those oysters for road building material, because if you've looked around here and haven't lived here long enough, you realize there's really not a lot of stone around here. So we have used hard shell clam and oyster to serve as a base for our roads early in the, through the 1920s, 30s, and 40s, and took that shell from the river, living and nonliving. It's our goal to return these natural systems that work 24/7. They don't take a weekend break. They are natural filters, and they're going to protect and continue to clean and watch our water quality in Manatee River. And we're going to do that with the help of federal and state grants to Manatee County. We won't be spending many taxpayer dollars to do this, because the federal government and the state of Florida, especially, has recognized the value of using oysters and clams in a natural way. Tens of millions of dollars are being spent around the state to reintroduce these living water quality machines. And we are at the forefront of doing that, again, with the support of our Board of County Commissioners here. This isn't just wild ideas that we come from. They take the support, leveraging, and constant effort of our government to keep the attention of the state and federal government to say, it's important down here. Bring you, bring us your resources to let us do more and more of these things. Some of those things that we're talking about, let me just look at, 5,000 seagrass plugs planted on the Sarasota Bay. 25,000 trees planted this year, 1.4 million trees since 2000. Yes, we lose trees to landscape and development. Well, what's the point and counterpoint? 1.4 million trees alone in the watershed of our drinking water reservoir, beginning to continue to protect the quality of that water that we drink every day. 1,500 vertical oyster gardens. What's that? Can't believe it. This is it. You put some oyster shell in a drill press, you put holes through it, you string it through wire that won't rust, you drop this from your dock or your boardwalk, and oysters grow on it. And think of the fish that come in here to get it. These are vertical oyster devices. 1,500 have been built by students and volunteers, volunteers, and we're going to be bringing thousands more to the water system. So, last slide. Here's where it really hits home. Let's take a moment from looking in the rearview mirror to looking at the windshield ahead. We have 30,000 acres so far that you own in Manatee County as natural preserves. How can we do more? How can we continue to have this protection? Well, you made it possible. For all of you here who voted in 2024, excuse me, in 2020, for the, in the general election, to support resources, to let us buy land from willing sellers, to take back and, and take those special places and preserve them forever. Thank you for doing that. This Board of County Commissioners right here has committed over $28 million of those funds that you voted for to acquire Emerson Point areas and the place we call Crooked River, to give us over 14 miles of Manatee County River shoreline that are protected. And I can tell you that by the end of this year, there are eight more properties in the pipeline, working again with willing sellers who want to find, for a fair and reasonable price, a decision to sell their property for conservation rather than development. Every one of those properties that we have acquired, every one of them had or did, was going through a development review for an alternative path to development. The resources were so valuable that we got the support, in many instances, again, of the state of Florida, to help purchase those properties. And there's more to come. So thank you. Stay involved. Keep looking through the windshield. Keep supporting this board's efforts to protect our water quality that we now know connects everything that we have in our life, our quality of life, and our economy. Water is the key. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Charlie. And one thing that you didn't mention, it was on one of your slides, and I know it's something that we're all proud of here, is the Future of the Region Award that the Gopher Tortoise Relocation Program out at Duette Preserve, with the leadership of Natural Resources and the board, they've created a suitable habitat to relocate gopher tortoises, if there's projects that impact existing tortoises out there. So with that, I'm going to invite up Kerry Knight. He is the Director of Property Management. This is our last presentation.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Kerry.
All right. I have probably what I think is the best job in the county. I know Chad and some of the other folks would probably disagree with me. But I get handed, so you guys feed your visions into the, into the commission. The commission gets to sit there and figure out with this entire bucket of, of everything that everybody wants to do, the things that they're going to push forward. And then they, they vote on them, they come down to the county administrator, the county administrator hands them down to us, and then we've got to figure out how do we make things happen. So property management is a accumulation of a number of departments. We're the ones that build it and maintain it. I think that's the easiest thing that I can say, everything but roads. So we have all the buildings and the parks. So we do the property, the grounds maintenance. We build the buildings, not physically, but we hire the people that do. And then we also maintain those buildings and make sure that they're accessible. We look at ways to make them more sustainable so that we get our buildings back open, we get our government back open, especially after a hurricane, because it's so vital to our economy. So it's just an amazing department. I can't say enough about it. And pretty much everybody's our customer, not only the other employees and the other departments within the county, but then also all the community as well. So anyway, without further ado, go on to the first slide. So I've only got a handful of slides, but it will only take me about 45, maybe 50 minutes. Kidding. And I, and I would like to say that, you know, I'm following a couple people here that, that have lived in this community for absolutely years. And I'm one of the very newer additions, came from another community not too far away. But I, we've been wanting to be part of this community for years. And what most people may not realize is, my wife and I got married 17 years ago, and we got married on Hannah Maria Island. And we knew from that point, almost 20 years ago, that this community was special, and we wanted to be here. And seeing this many people here just tells me how invested this community is. And I haven't been part of a group like this with a community outreach on a Saturday where every commissioner showed up. That's, this isn't usual. This, I've never seen this before. And I've been in county government for only 10 years, and before that was, was private. But I haven't seen this level of commitment to the community. So I just wanted to say thank you to you and, and our leadership for making this community special and doing this on a Saturday morning. So thank you very much for coming today. I appreciate that. So if you think about Premier, most people think and know Premier Campus, and they think the south part, which is all the soccer fields. But, but the county acquired the other piece of it, and then we're calling that Premier North. And I know that you're probably very familiar with the new library that's opened up. And there's some things that are also coming up here. And I'm just going to go through real quick. You can see kind of like a, a general idea. These were some early designs that kind of showed out how we could lay this area out. But things that are coming up more soon, I'm sorry, my glasses don't let me see quite that far. 26 pickleball courts. let me see quite that far. 26 pickleball courts, that's going to be coming in the summer of '26. The Aquatic Center also, part of that same area is summer of '26. There is an MCSO substation. So, as the community grows, we need to make sure that there's emergency services and first responders within the community. That's coming in the spring of '26. There's two synthetic turf soccer fields coming in the spring of '26. And really, really, very early on in the stages of, of looking for a potential partner, is the possibility of a parking structure, because we want to take up as little ground as possible for those types of areas. We don't want sprawling parking. We want to be able to use as much of the ground there as possible for things for the community. So, we're really excited about that. This is one of the early renditions of, of that area. You can see the existing library there on the, on the lower right. Above and to the back on the right is the Aquatic Center with all the pickleball courts, a future proposed parking garage. This may not be what it looks like. It may not be exactly where it's placed. But there is the idea of, of a potential parking garage so that we can focus parking into one area so we don't have big sprawling parking lots. We don't want to pave your paradise, so to speak. And then you can see the, the sheriff's station out front. And that's what we're calling Premier Sports Campus North. And then some of the future proposed projects that, that we're working on in future CIP initiatives are a baseball softball complex, the recreation trail. So, you have a nice, long recreation trail. You can walk around the, the park. And then also additional expanded parking as well. And then our tourism director spoke to you earlier. He runs, and his department oversees the sports campus south. We have some current projects there which are very exciting. They're expanding the locker rooms. That will be summer of '25. There's a stadium parking refresh, which is also going on at the same time. That will handle overflow parking and include a drop-off circle. All of that initiative will, will be summer of 2025. So, next, next summer. And then we're also adding a structural tent. That we're pushing through right now. We're having some permitting challenges that, we call them, we call challenges opportunities because they're, they're an opportunity for us to fix something and make it continue to move forward. But we're pushing for that to be done this fall. And then a maintenance facility will also be this fall as well. A little bit closer to where we are right now, Lakewood Ranch Park. There's some park improvements coming up. New fencing, split rail, and the football areas will be the fall of '24. They're doing a pickleball court renovation right now. That will also be this fall, so not that far off in the near future. There's a huge LED lighting initiative that's going on, and that will be all fields. There'll be retrofit of the existing fields and then new lighting to the new fields. And it's the new technology that, that is very focused and LED, so it doesn't bleed over into the neighbor homes like the old halogen big floodlights. So, much more efficient, much less energy consumption, and, and very focused into just where we want the light, so it doesn't bleed off into everywhere else. We're also renovating the high school baseball infield and the softball outfield, and that will be late spring 2025, so coming on really soon here. And then park irrigation, summer of '25, and then park drainage phase two, which will be the summer of '25. So, you can see a lot of things happening very quickly here at this Lakewood Ranch Park. Country Club East Park is just around the corner, kind of tucked in next to the school there. Baseball improvements there are scheduled for funding in fiscal year '25, and our fiscal year starts October 1st. We're going to have up to three little, little league baseball fields, bleachers, dugouts, back spot, backstops, expanded parking, and perimeter fencing. And even though the money doesn't become available until 2025, or when our budget season starts, we're already in the process, actually, for all of our fiscal year '25 initiatives, reaching out to those architects and engineers and getting quotes on the designs now, so that as soon as the budget's approved, we'll have those on the October agenda so we can hit the ground running and we can get these programs out to you as absolutely quickly as possible. And then a new playground's going to be installed there this summer. So, we're excited about getting a new playground there. So, that will be a great improvement to that little park. And then Greenbrook Park, also met out there yesterday, actually, and, and looked at some of the parking issues and overflow issues and how we work with the school for drop-off and overflow to keep that road safe and keep people off the road. But there's soccer field improvements coming, conversion to Bermuda grass, which is happening this fall, August of 2024. And then they're also, this park's also part of the LED lighting system, which will happen at the same time as, as the other ones in the summer of '25. And that is my last slide.
Hey, Mr. Chair. We have the, one follow-up, higher point presentation is, we have this initiative we started at the end of last year. It's going to win up to 2,200 personnel. It's called Newsflash. And this is an opportunity for the departments you just heard from and the Board of County Commissioners to get the word out each month through a Newsflash magazine of all the great things we're doing here in the county, not only with Lakewood Ranch, but our beaches, our parks, and all the great initiatives. It's as simple as downloading a QR code, and then you'll be signed up for the monthly Newsflash. I'll put these QR codes down there on the bottom on the table. I also want to remind the audience, we all have a great app called 311. Again, you download this app, and it gives you an opportunity. When you see a pothole, you see a stop sign this fall, and you see an initiative in our park where the bathroom may needs to be repaired or something, just go out on that 311 app, put in your, your comment, and it gets immediately sent out to the various departments that will receive that issue. And hopefully, we can get to that problem sooner than later.
HOA reps, if they want to get the Newsflash, they can share it.
Yeah. Great point, Commissioner. The HOA reps, if you're here, you can share that with your, your neighborhoods also. I also want to commend the school board for allowing us this opportunity, Kevin Chapman. I want to thank METV. I want to thank Vicky Teszmer, the clerk, for being here. But most importantly, I want to thank my staff for coming out here today to provide this great presentation of all the things we're doing. We're doing work that matters, and it shows each and every day.
Thank you, sir. Oh, great. Thank you. Well, what I'd like to do, before we start public comment, I'd just like to thank our great staff for all the hard work they do. And they're led by Charlie Bishop, our county administrator. Does an outstanding job. We're really as good as our staff is, and our staff is very good. So, thank you very much, staff, for being here today. And thank the clerk's office for being here today, for also helping us out with this, uh, all things Lakewood Ranch. What we'd like to do now is to open up for public comment. We're going to have, you have three minutes to public comment. What I asked is that you direct any questions to the presentation that was presented today. And we'll get those questions answered for you. We also have staff here. Also, if you need to reach out after the meeting, you can reach out to Commissioner Turner. He's your District Five Commissioner. To reach out to his office with any questions, you can email him, call him, and he'll get those back to you also. Also, we have, and you can reach out to, to our two at-large commissioners, which Commissioner Jason Bearden, he's District Six, and Commissioner George Cruz of District Seven. They both, they also both represent, they're countywide, but they also are out here in Lakewood Ranch, too. So, you can get to those three gentlemen. They'll be able to help you with any other questions after the meeting. What I'd like to do now is I'd like to call up our, we have a couple speaker cards. And what I'd like to do, if you would step up, state your name, county residence. We just have to have that for public record since this is a workshop. And we'll first start with Pat Simmons. Good morning, Ms. Simmons. How are you? Good to see you again.
Good morning. You all have heard this before, but they haven't. And from what I heard today, it was a great presentation, but I heard nothing that related to the Americans with Disabilities Act. I heard nothing about accessible sidewalks. I heard nothing about accessible playgrounds. If the boat is handicap accessible for people in wheelchairs, canes, walkers. So, I'm very disappointed. It was a great presentation for people that can walk and talk and see and hear, but that's not reality for a lot of us. There's also, I'm sure it happens in Lakewood Ranch, because it's happening in town all the time, that people are parking in the access lanes between handicap parking spots. And those hashed-out marks are there for reason. So, if there's a handicap accessible van that needs to load a wheelchair or oxygen, et cetera, and there's someone parked there, they can't do it. Or they come out, how are they supposed to get back into their pants? So, I don't know what the answer is, other than a public education, a PSA, some fine threats. Something's got to be done in this county. ADA people exist, we vote, and we're here, I'm here to give voice to the voiceless. So, please, staff, don't disregard us. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for comments. Next up is Jan Rusini. Did I pronounce that right? Jan Rusini?
Yeah.
Okay. There she is. Thank you. Way in the back. If, we could also hold off any clapping or anything. This is a public meeting. It's being recorded for public record, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Good morning. Jan Rensie from Edgewater Cove, 21-year resident. I'm very pleased to be here today. This has been very informative. However, when I heard the Public Works Department speak about the four lanes that you're going to convert University to, I thought I was going to have a heart attack. Living in Edgewater has been a wonderful place to live, except for University Parkway. Over the decades, the traffic has increased, the speed is out of control, and the noise level is 24/7. It is making, living there almost unbearable. And for people trying to sell their property, it is adding to the impact of how difficult it is. So, my first question and request would be, between Legacy and Lakewood Ranch Boulevard, we need a berm, we need, we need a wall, we need something. Lakewood Ranch SEVA is definitely working on helping us. However, we do need the commissioners to help us to provide more of a barrier. And now knowing that University is going to be converted to four lanes, I cannot imagine what the impact will be on our neighborhood. I'll mention again, the speed, it is like a racetrack. If you were ever there in the evening or during the middle of the night, you'll see people racing up and down the Boulevard. The speed is out of control. I'm very surprised that no one has been killed, whether in a car accident or someone who's trying to cross the Parkway. So, I ask you for whatever hope you can give us. It's been a long time coming. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your comments. Thank you for being here today. Next up, please, folks, we, we just, we can't have clapping. Like I said, this is a public meeting, and it's being recorded for public record. So, please, I appreciate that. Next up is Robert Lurich? I can't, I can't read your handwriting, sir. Lukash?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Could you please state your name and your county residence?
Sure. Robert Lukash, county resident of Manatee County. Currently, I live in Sapphire Point, and there's development going on on the corner of 70 and U Line. Apparently, it's a currently agricultural, and they're transferring it over to commercial, which is a huge concern for our development. There's many people in our community that are concerned exactly what type of facility is going to be there. Now, relative to Development Services and Natural Resources, since that land was originally agricultural, I'm asking the county commissioners if the possibility that we can continue to zone it as such and not make it into a commercial establishment. We are very close to that. We're literally 15 feet from that new development, and our concern is what type of building will be put up there, what type of commercial establishment, and how it will affect our community. And also, the, you know, the traffic on U Line Avenue, which they apparently is going to be in access. We've had a meeting already with the, the possible developers, which gave us some ideas. But our, our concern is really just to try to terminate that whole, the whole development. And I understand, you know, the expansion of the community and for, for people in access, and, and there's a need. But, you know, we're also here for, we've been here first, and we're concerned about the development there. So, if there's anything, you know, the county commission could do, it would be greatly appreciated.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Next up, we have Carol Lucas. Ma'am, if you'd come down and state your name and county residence, and you have three minutes, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Carol Lucas, and I live in Manatee County. I'm here to speak, speak on pickleball. I saw Development Services had a presentation. I actually appreciated all the presentations today. But it's another presentation. Started in 2017 when I met with county staff, John Osborne, Danny Hopkins, Charlie Hunsaker, and requested pickleball courts. They said, oh, they're going to be built in 2019. Then in 2018, I got an email saying there's going to be a master plan, and it says there's a significant demand for pickleball courts in Lakewood Ranch. Nothing. Then in 2018, there was a meeting at the Red Cross Building right across here at the, in Lakewood Ranch with the county commissioners, same as here, where there were plans for Lakewood Ranch park upgrades. Guess what? It's the same chart you just showed that said they're going to start it this year. That was in 2018. Six years it took to build those. And in 2019, there was a presentation on the premier sports campus plans. Said, oh, there's going to be pickleball. Now, we're still planning, and it's not going to be until 2026 now. The county did repurpose basketball courts in 2019 to build pickleball. But as you can see, they've dug those up already because they didn't last. They were beyond age when they were first done. And now, when you close those, there's zero pickleball courts, public pickleball courts in Lakewood Ranch. You have to drive 45 minutes to GT Bray. And when I drove here today, I drove by the tennis courts there. You know, you did beautiful tennis courts. There are eight of them. Two of them were being used. Sarasota County is lining pickleball courts on their tennis courts and putting rolling pickleball nets on them so that they can be reused, reutilized. And you didn't even have the common courtesy to provide an alternative for residents of Lakewood Ranch. What I ask is that the county commissioners hold the staff accountable for actually delivering on plans. Right now, $14 million has been allocated from the infrastructure sales tax to the Parks and Aquatics District. But Lakewood Ranch, what do we see? Please stop shuffling the money and start building pickleball courts in Lakewood Ranch. And when you build them, like these ones here at the high school, there was supposed to be a restroom. There were supposed to be lights. There was going to be wind screens. I don't see that in the plans. We need real pickleball courts for community. There, it's a sport that's being played by all ages, young, old, before work, after work, even retired citizens are playing. It'd be great to have that, and it's a great community builder. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Kathy Woolley. Good morning, ma'am. If you could please state your name and your county residence, and you'll have three minutes. Thank you, ma'am.
I just don't get down here as fast as I used to. I just, I'm all in favor of all the presentations. They were great. They were great, and a few things were missing, I'm sure will be thought about and added to. I know this is all things Lakewood Ranch, but I'd like to move just a little west and talk about Tara, which is on the west side of I-75. From Public Works, I'd like to know what the plan is for Tara Boulevard, south of Stone River Road and north of Tara Preserve Lane. It was there 20 years before Lakewood Ranch Boulevard, and really has some paving problems and some very serious speed problems for a road that's a neighborhood street. I'd like to know from property management, because of the Lake Lincoln settlement that the county just did, you took over some land on the corner of Tara Boulevard and State Road 70. It's a really nice piece of green space. We'd love to know what you're thinking about doing with it. I talked to property management, they just inherited it. I think they're planning to use it for some water conservation, which would be fabulous because we have a lot of flooding in that area, but maybe you could find a space in the new newsflash to tell the citizens in that area. It's not just us, it's Creekwood to the north, it's Rosedale to the east, and it's the communities over towards Bay Shore. And then lastly, everybody down at my place is asking that question. Tell me about the Creekwood Roundabout. We know there's a lot of opposition in Creekwood, but the problem has to be resolved. Every day, you, all of us come out of Creekwood Shopping Center, whether you're at Lowe's or Bell's or eating at Wheat and Water, whatever it is, and you can't get out safely. So having a better understanding, there's a sign up, and I think the more we look at it, the more we think it doesn't help. So really, having some further word on that would be very helpful for the communities in that area, especially with 44th finishing up in a couple of years. There'll be a lot of north-south traffic coming down 44th through Creekwood, and what we're finding is the traffic is coming down from the north into Tara, which has no purpose in Tara, so it's trying to make a U-turn on a terrible intersection. So we're very interested in what, just come a little west, and tell us a little bit more about the planning for those intersections that run between that terrible piece of I-70 that runs west from I-75 down to the tech school. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. That's the end of our speaker cards. If there's anyone else in the audience that'd like to come forward, please state your name, your county residence, and you have three minutes, and we...
Good morning. My name is Harold Kobukoff, resident of Manatee County. My wife Barbara and I are new residents. We've been here for six months and love it. Terrific community, that's why we moved here. Flip it up.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Never performed before. There you go. Okay.
It's not karaoke nights.
Yeah, thank you. You never know, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So first of all, I just want to say thank you to the Board of Commissioners for your time and everything that you're doing here in your service, and really for everyone that presented today. I think it's been an excellent meeting, a lot of great information, so just want to thank you for all of that. Being new, this is my concern. It's about, you know, not an attorney, not a developer, haven't been in government, and have just moved here, but I'm concerned about the density that's happening on Lorain Road that's there. You know, all of a sudden, on 64, when we drove, it was, you know, single-family houses, it's pretty spread out, beautiful communities. Now we've got, you know, four-story apartment buildings, one going on there, another one going there. I know a lot of new proposed development on 64, and then there's also, you know, new development that's being proposed on Lorain Road between 64 and 70. And developers have reached out and talked to us, but we're very concerned about what they're, they're putting here. So I just, I guess it has to do with Nicole. I want to understand the process, how we get our voice into that, and really look to your help in helping us maintain our quality of life here because concerns about density and, and, you know, pressure on county services, but also what we could be facing in our community. So I don't know, do I follow up with Mr. Turner? Is that...
Yes, sir.
Okay, awesome. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you for allowing us to come. Great meeting.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Thank you for being here today. Good morning, sir. If you could please state your name, your county residence, and you have three minutes.
I'm Haskin. I'm a resident of Manatee County, Lakewood National, also the president of Lakewood Ranch Pickleball Club, representing over 1,700 active players that are playing pickleball regularly. Carol and I had started the club eight years ago, seven years ago now. She gave a nice summary of what we did earlier. More recently, we've been told we would have courts back two years ago. That got pushed back to August of '23. Then we were told we were going to have pickleball courts at Premier, started later this year, and now we're hearing '26. Appreciate it if that could get pushed up. We keep seeming to be getting tied up with the larger project that's going on there. In addition to that, the, I was working with the county parks to get the pickleball courts.
Hey, they'll be done in '26, not starting. I just want to make that clear. Because a couple of people have said they'll be starting in '26. No, no, they'll be done in '26.
That's, that's nice. It's still two years after. We were told last year, unfortunately. The lighting at the current park here at the high school, I was told there's not going to be any lighting for the pickleball in the budget. Just got told on your presentation that you're pretty much replacing every light in this field, except for the ones at the pickleball courts. People play in the winter that work, the courts are used, you can't see, and when you are playing there, the lights that are on the ball field look like this. Can't even see the ball on the cross side. Hopefully, the new lights in the ball fields will take care of some of that issue, but there does need to be wind screens there and lighting as well. Appreciate anything you can do to push this forward. Like I said, I represent an over 1,700 players. We've got 50 teams that are playing almost all year round now. Just using my Lakewood National, 10% of the people at Lakewood National play pickleball. So as people are coming to these communities like Sapphire Point that don't have pickleball, 10% of those people are looking to go to places like here at the high school to play pickleball. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're going to take just a few more questions, and I want to give the commissioners and staff an opportunity to respond to some of the questions. So, yes, sir, please state your name, county residence, and you have three minutes. We'll take a couple more questions.
My name is John Moleman. I live in Manatee County. Actually, I have two points I would like to make. I'm sure some of it can come up at Commissioners Turner's, also Commissioner Forum on June 4th. So the two things, we grew up in, I grew up in Indiana, my wife lived on a farm, we lived 31 years in the state of Washington, we had a ranch. And I noticed today through all these presentations, obviously, you can see it in everywhere, the growth that's, that's taken place. I guess that the question is, have we paid a price in some aspects as it pertains to ranches and agriculture? Because in the other areas that we lived, we recognized that was still a very vital part, that you had to have some of that also to be successful in communities and so on. And I wonder if we draw on a line somewhere, at what point do we say no more developments in some areas not to forfeit more ranch and farmland from disappearing? My second point is related to what happened with, because this didn't come up today, related to the hurricane. I know I live in District 2, CDD 2. I know our Lakewood Ranch, we actually filed for FEMA funding for about a million, $1,400,000. We had not received a dime of it. I hear through my town meetings that we might not receive anything, and many of it said maybe we should have relied on the county more for those services when we actually went out and paid for them. And since we're not getting reimbursed for them, if hurricanes continue to come, the question is, do you have the resources available to actually be able to come in and clean up debris and stuff in many of our communities that we wouldn't have to wait for, for three extra months by us doing it? Now we paid for it, now we're not going to get any reimbursement. So that's my two points, and I hope you have conversations around it, and I hope to hear more about it on June 4th. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right.
Good morning. My name is Tom Allrath. Been a resident here since December of '13. First off, I'd like to thank you to all your commissioners, support staff, public safety. Appreciate everyone coming out on a Saturday morning. Live in Central Park Cross Street, I'm president of the Board of Directors, so I'm speaking on behalf of the association, specifically to traffic signals and the development services. 44th, when I moved here 11 years ago almost, I knew that we'd be able to drive out of our gate and go right to the beach. I thought, this is going to be fantastic. Took a little longer, but it is what it is. So we just spent last week almost $2,000 to upgrade our north gate, which dumps right onto Wood Fern and 44th, anticipating the traffic's still coming, which is now, I learned this morning, it's much sooner than we thought, so we're going to have to actually probably shut that resident gate down, or that, that gate down to visitor and commercial traffic and be resident only. That was not going to be in this year's plan, but I got to edit our Board of Directors meeting this month, I think. So anyway, as you know, there's a large apartment building, proposed complex, on the corner of Lakewood Ranch and 44th, which is going to dump a significant amount of traffic onto 44th. There's no provisions to exit that development, to go south on Lakewood Ranch, so they're going to have to either go east or west on 44th, or north on Lakewood Ranch Boulevard to proceed to go south. So we're going to dump all this traffic in our quadrant, right there in the corner, in a project that's now going to be multifamily, which is coming before the county commissioners on, I think it's August 22nd. That was initially developed as a commercial property. So it's, just want to put that out there, and we'll be in touch, Ray, probably, and we've got some other questions, but we'll definitely reach out and get in touch with you. Thanks again.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. All right, what'll do is, okay, one last one, because we want to be able to respond before we...
Hi, my name is Sorry Lindros Valley Mackey, and I am a resident of Manatee County since 2018. I have a couple of things I just want to bring awareness to. The CSO, which is the Cybersecurity Infrastructure and Security Agency, recently released an advisory that the nature state acts are trying to target our utility departments. I want to make sure that you're aware of it, that our cybersecurity hygiene is at the level and it's supported, so that they, they are supposedly trying to infiltrate our cybersecurity, our utility departments, so that at a later date, they can use that to attack us. We need to be aware of it. I am also very concerned, as I am one of the families that got evacuated when the Piney Point Stack happened, when the Piney Point Stack leak happened, and that water contamination hasn't been tested for any of the unregulated contaminants since 2018. That's before Piney Point happened. So we're not testing for any of these unregulated contaminants, but the EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, is not very rapid at updating the list of contaminants that they test for. We should exceed the testing level and not look back and have it been lightly tested in 2018. That is something that should not be happening. And also, I want to say, everyone should go to the Drillapalusa and build an oyster anchor. It is the best way to get something back to the community, as every single oyster can clean 50 gallons of water. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, sir, this has got, I mean, if we don't, this is yet, this is the last call to come, because we're going to try to answer your guys' questions before you leave.
Yes, sir, I understand. I'm Dustin Doggus.
I didn't see your bag.
I'm the principal here at Lakewood Ranch High School, so...
I didn't see your, so I didn't see your bag.
A little bit of my house here, so...
Thank you.
No, I joke with you. I have no complaints whatsoever to you all, the commissioners. I just want to thank you for coming here to Lakewood Ranch High School today, to listening to the, to the citizens. I thank all of, all of the directors and everyone for their presentations, and I encourage the inter-local agreements that we have, the, the partnership that we have with Manatee County, especially in, in the parks over there. I would encourage perhaps us talking about some resurfacing potentially of the baseball and the softball complexes, and, and that would improve the quality of our students' experience here at Lakewood Ranch High School. So I appreciate, and I think if we talked about GT Bray, that would improve, improve some Manatee hurricane stuff as well. So thank you for being here at Lakewood Ranch, and I'm...
Thank you. I apologize again, I didn't see you down there, so thank you for letting us be in your house today.
And I'm a 27-year resident here in the county.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. We appreciate you being a principal of a high school also, and I know that's probably a tougher job than ours is.
And the resurfacing, sir, the resurfacing, good to see you again, first of all. But the resurfacing of both was, I believe, on one of the slides, and it is imminent as well as, you know, we've done some things already, you got to put in warning tracks, we've done some infield work, there's more coming, there's some outfield work coming, fencing coming, there's some landscaping around softball and baseball, and you have LED lighting coming to those fields as well. So, all right. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I just want to address a couple, a gentleman's question with regards to having a voice with regards to development. As Nicole Knapp presented earlier, when it goes through the process, and you know a development's coming in, you can always use your 3-1-1 system, and it'll go to the department that it's directed to and to the commissioner that is in that district. You also have the opportunity, as citizens that come before the planning commission, and have comments during a public comment on that item. And then again, you have the same opportunity to come before the land use meeting, which is the Board of County Commissioners meet to approve or deny a project. So you have several opportunities to come out and, and speak on a development, if you want to speak for it, against it, or, and have that time to do that. So, and then with regards to Ms. Simmons' question, we have a ADA playground we just dedicated, did a ribbon cutting about a month ago at Tom Bennett Park. We encourage everybody to use Tom Bennett Park, which is right off of, right on the other side of the interstate from Heritage Harbor. But Tom Bennett Park's a great park. We have ADA playground there that is wheelchair accessible, and it's open for all. And then we'll be also putting a splash pad there for, that everybody can use, the ADA, the children that need it, the handicap kids that need it, and everyone. So that's out at ADA, Tom Bennett Park. Would anybody else like to address any other questions? Yeah, go ahead. Commissioner Van Osterbridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I sort of jotted it down as everybody came through, and, and ADA concerns, as the chair said, I think we are doing a good job with that. We just didn't do a very good job in the presentation of addressing it and making people aware, and I think that's something we can certainly tweak. The next concern was traffic. I agree. We are $750 million into county road improvements. We advocate constantly with the state for monies to come in, including bridge replacements. We're around $1 billion in state road improvements in this community as well, so those road projects don't happen as fast as we would like either. I sit in the same traffic that you do, and we want to see it happen faster, just like you. Then next one was, was development and traffic, next one was pickleball, and just have delays, which I think is overall government not moving fast enough. I think we all agree with that, and we're the governments, and we agree with you on that. Pickleball is coming, though, and you're going to have an amazing pickleball facility. And then I have traffic, it was Kathy Woolley, the mayor of Tara. She has, I think that's accurate, she has traffic and some neighborhood, neighborhood traffic concerns, which I'm sure Commissioner Turner will address. Yeah, then I have development and density. I mean, you know, we get just as frustrated as you do about that. Then we have pickleball, pickleball, pickleball. That guy was really on his pickleball. Development and FEMA, so somebody had brought up that their neighborhood is still waiting for FEMA reimbursements. You know, quite honestly, so are we. I feel like we move slow, the federal government moves like molasses, and there's, there is just a truth to the fact that we have a, we have a, we have a governor who ran for president, and as a result, there have been some significant, the thumb has been put on the scale when it comes to Florida, including counties like this one, when it comes to our reimbursements. We're owed millions and millions of dollars, by tens of millions, by FEMA, and that's going back to Hurricane Ian, and those monies still have not come in. And they do affect budgets like utilities when it comes to solid waste, that sort of thing, because that's, that's who's owed the money. So we're waiting on our FEMA money as well. And then traffic, and we agree, and then the last was a lot of cybersecurity and some environmental concerns regarding Piney Point and that sort of thing. So all in all, I think, pretty good engagement, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your response. Any other commissioners like to respond? Yes, Commissioner Ballard.
I've got one thing I'd like to address, really briefly. So we heard from EMS about our new drone program, and I, it's a really exciting program, and, and I think that residents are really going to benefit from it. But I did just want to add one thing that I'm, I'm not sure if it was completely made clear, that will not slow down the response time of an ambulance coming to your house. So this is an addition, it's, it's in addition to the ambulance that is going to be on its way to your home. This is delivering an AED to your home in, you know, if somebody's having a heart attack, it will be there within two minutes, whereas the ambulance, which is still on its way, might take 10 or 15. So don't have any concern that this is going to slow down the ambulance or be as a replacement too. It's, it's, it's in addition to make things go faster and provide, provide that lifesaving care.
Ma'am, we can't just take questions from the audience, I think. Ma'am, we can't just take questions from the audience, thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Commissioner Ballard.
I think, yeah, I think the chair, he deleted my mic. I did want to address some of the traffic concerns, and there's one lady that came up about the sound abatement maybe on university, so I will take a look at it. The county usually doesn't get into building berms, but sometimes we work with SMR to create a solution for, you know, sound abatement, which we're doing on Lorain Road as a matter of fact. The congestion, I would say, I can't take credit for this because I'm newer to the board, but the prior board members have been, they've had their foot hardcore on the gas to get these road improvements done. Like, if you look at the history of the 44th extension, it's moving a whole lot faster than what it ever was, the Lorain extension is moving a lot faster, Lena Road, all of these things to give us relief. So we are putting our foot on the gas as hard as we can, along with Upper Manatee and those things. I did want to thank all of you for coming out and giving up your Saturday morning, hopefully it was of value. We wanted to offer something a little bit unique, where we bring the government to you, because most people don't have time to go to a board meeting, and this way you get to meet the folks, really the brains behind the scene, so hopefully that part of it was value, as well as sort of casting a long-term vision. So thank you for coming out, though.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. County Minister? County Attorney? You good? Any other commissioners, we good? Thanks again for everyone coming out, we will have more of these that are going to be kind of a road show type events more and more, but thank you for coming out today, thank you for spending your Saturday morning with us, we appreciate you, we appreciate you as citizens, and we look forward to seeing you again real soon. We stand adjourned.